If not, then I will ask for a vote by the Board to approve the August 1, 2019 minutes. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes as written for August 1, 2019.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. The minutes for August 1 are approved. So, let's now turn to the August 15 minutes. And does anybody have any additions, corrections, or deletions to the draft of the August 15 There being no additions, corrections, or deletions mentioned, I ask for a motion to approve the August 15 minutes.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed. August 15 minutes are approved, as is. Okay. Going on to the next item. The next item are member items. Does anybody have any thing that they want to bring before the other Board members that's of particular interest? If not, I do have a couple of things, but I'll defer to other members at this point.
Well, the only item I would bring up is an item that I brought up before, and that's that it behooves the members of the Board to go look at 51 Marmion Way. Do you see the construction that's ongoing there? It was my intent to see the plans for that house. I have not yet done that. But I think that we, as a Board, should be aware of the size of that house, because I think it will be substantial. And one would hope that if, in fact, it falls under site plan review, we should either be made aware of it, or we should make that determination ourselves. Part of what is going on, which would suggest to me that it should fall under site plan review, is that more than the minimum size for a house on that property has been disturbed already. And that the minimum size, I believe, is 12,000, well, it's the lot size, 12,000 square feet. But anyway, the two lots, I guess maybe it was never divided. Anyway, one lot, which was to have been divided, was not divided and sold, is now being used for a single dwelling. I assume it's a single residence. But we should see those plans, review them, and make sure that it is not something that falls under site plan review if it does not.
Herm, have you had any conversations with the building inspector about this?
No, I haven't. I mean, my hope has always been that the building inspector would be bringing such items to us, that we, it should not be our obligation to go to the building inspector to look at plans, determine square footage, and also look at the amount of soil that's been disturbed on a piece of property to determine whether the construction falls under site plan review. So, I have not gone. It's not that I did plan to go that day, I didn't have time to do it, but...
Well, I mean, if you're, you know, this is, that would be a good thing to do, to see what is, whether he's even thought about it, if he has, what his conclusions are, you know, whether, we've already been through the same thing with 201 Main, so he's, he's obviously kind of, should be in tune.
Oh, he's keyed in. He's keyed in.
Yeah. So, he should be in tune with that, and then, of course, the gross floor area of the building, he should be in tune with that. So, if he, if they're doing work on a building, on a new building already, they already have a building permit.
I don't think, I haven't looked at it recently. Aren't they just tearing down the old building?
They had only disturbed land as far as I could see. I don't think they'd poured any, any found, any, put any forms in.
Is this the one where the building was, it was like demolished on site and the debris was left there, or am I thinking of a different location on Marmion Way? Because one of them, they just knocked down a building and it was, it stayed there for a while.
It's a single lot that exists between Gull Road and Gaphead Road. It's on the water side. You can't, but I don't think that they have put in forms and poured a foundation.
All right. So, do you, do you want to talk to the building inspector, or do you want me to talk?
Well, I mean, I, my intent is to go see the plans. The rub may very well be how you determine square footage, not lot size, but, but house. And it's a question of whether or not, in my mind, whether all the surface areas that represent porches as well as interior spaces are being included. I'll go and ask. I'm not opposed to doing that. I'll talk with Paul.
All right. Good. Anything else from Tom?
Two items I'd like to mention. One, a likes email that I forwarded around earlier today, an invitation to a event in Boston.
It's on September?
September 25th.
Right.
I believe I mentioned this back in July.
You did.
And Hank expressed an interest in going, so I went ahead and formally invited everyone on the Board, in case anyone else is interested.
Okay.
And it's a plus-one invitation, so if you can think of someone we forgot that would be a good person to attend, please feel free to invite them. And there's an RSVP link in the invitation.
This is for climate change? What's the title of it?
People on K-PAN, organizations and people that want to take action and want to stop being disjointed in their action, to come together in some coalition. And there will probably be, we hope, coming out of this, some subgroups. People that want to work on education, people that want to work on mitigation, people that want to work on adaptation, composting, recycling, you know, whatever people have the interest in can be subgroups of the, but rather than working on it all as, as sort of individuals or individual organizations, the idea is to have a grouping of people that can work together. And there's clearly some regional aspects to this, and things like going together for a grant, or you name it.
Okay.
So, you know, consider whether you'd like to go, and if you can think of someone else who'd like to go.
And we do that by like going online and logging in?
Yeah, there's a link in the, in the email message that I sent, and you RSVP there.
Okay.
The second item relates to an email we got several weeks ago about requesting a FEMA mitigation plan for Long Beach. It was sent to the entire planning board, I believe.
Explain more. Tell us more about it.
That's not ringing a bell.
Okay. I understand that FEMA has a process where you can apply for grants to do mitigation for threatened, for areas that are threatened by, by climate change. And this is called a mitigation plan.
Okay.
And a municipality would do it, and it's unclear who would take the lead. I guess often it's the town council, or, I mean, city council, or select board, or in some cases, it could be a planning board. So, if there is no action from other parts of Rockport, I'm wondering if the planning board should consider taking a role here about mitigating any threats to Long Beach. If you look at the FEMA maps, just not projecting any sort of sea level rise, or storms, or just the FEMA flood maps, all of Long Beach is in a velocity zone.
Right.
As is all of Bear Skin Neck and parts of Dock Square.
Right.
So, perhaps those two areas of town might need some long-term planning for what to do about mitigating.
So, are you, are you saying that Long Beach, you called it a velocity zone? Is that what you said?
That's the FEMA terminate, term for...
Is that like, is that the same thing as a floodplain, or?
It's a, it's a classification of flood zone.
Okay.
I think VE is the typical one here. It's where they've done the wave model, and the waves can come and reach, in this case, structures.
So, do you, do you think that the planning board has the, I mean, you might, but do you think that the planning board has the expertise to do a mitigation plan?
It would typically envier, involve hiring someone with...
Okay. I'm sorry.
Someone with expertise in making such a plan, but we would get any local expertise available for what we know about the current situation and what we are thinking about doing now.
Okay.
So, someone has to sort of initiate this, and then...
Do you have whatever material, because I, this does not ring a bell to me, and...
There is a guide to doing these plans, and it explains who can do it, and who has to be involved, and what the process is, and I can forward that.
But I'm just, what I'm specifically, because I would probably run this by Mitch.
Yeah.
Something that was relative to Long Beach. You said there was a request?
The request was specific to Long Beach, but I might broaden that out to say that there are two areas of town threatened by storms and climate change making it worse.
All right. Well, I guess you and I can talk about this outside of the meeting. Because if, if we're gonna offer to have the planning board do it, if the planning board wants to do that, then we have to probably run that by, you know, Mitch, and make sure that it's not already being done by somebody else.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anything else?
Should be interesting, these two subjects.
Which, which do?
Well, the 25th meeting and what we just talked about.
Yeah.
Also, because I'm not quite sure how I feel about a lot of this stuff, because I think most of the stuff ought to be done at the, at the national level, and, anyway, I'm, I'm happy to go to the 25th meeting and participate. I'm not, I'm not, I went to a meeting up in Beverly Library a few months ago where they were talking about Newbury Port and so forth, and while I found it interesting, I didn't think they covered everything, and it's, I think this is a hard subject to cover just locally, but I'm...
Right. I mean, that's, that's, that's a $74 question, right? I mean, is it, is it something, it's not national, it's not regional, it's not statewide, it's not countywide, it's Rockport-wide, and whether that's, can be effective at all. So, okay. So, I have a couple, I just had a couple of things. First of all, I hand it out, and we can discuss this at the next meeting, because it might bear on, certainly on the TOD, but a memorandum from the Kleinfeldter, Felder Engineering Group dated June 24, 2019, concerning, it's basically an update of their sewer capacity needs assessment, which they had completed in October of 2013, and this updates that information based on real data that they've obtained since then. It's, I don't think we can, we should discuss this now, because number one, it's got a lot of information that needs to be digested, but number two, it's not on the agenda, but we can certainly discuss this on, at our next meeting, and maybe there's some conclusions someone will get from it. It's, I think it's kind of an interesting report, and the conclusions are interesting, and of course, raises the same issue that always comes up, which is the infiltration issue, meaning water getting in from outside the sewer system, rainwater getting into the system, and ballooning the amount of treated water that goes through the system. So, that's, that's just an aside. So, anyway, take a look at this, we'll discuss it at the next, next meeting. I also want to say, just for information purposes, that, that the Drummond Road application was officially withdrawn between the last meeting and this meeting, so the, we're giving back the documents that were filed to the applicant, and, you know, the next move is their move, but it's, it's off our, it's off our plate now, for good, for a while at least.
Were there any indications from them, and any conversation you had, what the, why they withdrew it, or what they are thinking about?
No idea, Hank, none. They just said they wanted to, you know, the communication from the applicant was, well, we want to put it on the back burner, and I said, well, that's, that's a little too ambiguous, what does that mean, and do you want to withdraw it? And then she came back and said, yes, and so it's, it's now withdrawn, so they would have to refile. The other thing, I, I don't know if anyone saw this, it was kind of stuck in one of the boxes, it's got scribbles on it, but this is, it's kind of ironic, if I'd say, if anyone wants to read this article, it's in the Globe, August 4. The headline is "Towns Put the Brakes on More Development," which is interesting, because this is how towns are actually, you know, obviously south of us, southwest of us, are putting the brakes on residential developments that are being proposed for those towns. So, here we are, saying we need more residential developments, we need developers, we need things, and here they are, you know, 20 miles away from us, saying, no, we don't want any more residential developments, because our infrastructure can't handle them. And actually, one of them is, it's a god-awful location, as far as I can tell, but it's on this, on Route 1, on this hill, the hilltop, used to be a restaurant.
Right, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's a great place to have a house, but anyway, someone is developing it, so, so if anybody, I'm getting these alerts, I don't know. So, if anybody wants to take a look at this, it is kind of interesting and fits into the discussions about the TOD.
Right.
That's, for member items, oh, yes, as I said, that sounds like a fire thing. I did, I did go to the selectmen's meeting, last meeting, some of you were there, Tom was there, and I think it went pretty well. One of the things I, I did want to bring up at the selectmen's meeting, because just to keep it on the front burner, is the planner issue, and I did bring that up, and the selectmen were interested in that. They seemed concerned. If I, my observation was correct, that we didn't have a planner?
Correct.
And they looked at Mitch, and they said, well, what's going on? So, that was good, because it, it kind of emphasized the importance of that. And so, right now, I spoke with Mitch today, Gloucester, which was the hope of sharing with them, they, they're not interested. That's, that was really too bad. However, Mitch said that there are three adjoining towns to Rockport that all have a planner, that he's talked about this idea of sharing services with them, and he's gonna continue, he's having a meeting with them next week, he's gonna continue that conversation, and so we'll see what happens out of that. The other thing that we're gonna do is re-advertise this position, but maybe in a different way, on the Massachusetts Association of Planners website. I think one of the problems with us is that we're, you know, we are at the end of the line, so for, to have someone actually come here on a regular basis is really a lot to ask, to get, you know, part-time on top of that. So, we may end up having to compromise on that and work with somebody who communicates remotely for most of the time. I mean, that's, it's not ideal, but it may be the reality if we're gonna get anybody to, you know, come and work 10 to 15 hours a week, so...
Have we looked into Essex, what they're doing?
Well, that's one of the towns that, not to get ahead of myself, but that's one of the towns that, that Mitch has been talking with. Couple of the adjoining towns, Essex, Manchester, and I think one other town. Yeah. So, you know, again, the, the good news is there are two, that I did have a couple of conversations with our old planner, and he's, you know, he did the public notice for the, this upcoming public hearing, very willingly, and he also said, which was really good, he said, if, if you, if you have a specific project that you need my services with, he can do it. Well, that's really great, because I thought, I thought maybe, you know, we'd end up using him for Drummond Road, to getting an outside view on that, but now, obviously, that's a moot point, but, so, you know, Kirk, Kirk has offered his services, I think that's terrific, and that could actually help us if we're, you know, if we do have something, you know, drop in our lap that we really need help on, so, that's about all I have.
Apparently, no one's been complaining. The public hasn't been complaining, coming in the planning board office, and nobody's to work with them.
Been really, really quiet.
Yeah.
Really, really quiet. Nope. No one said anything. We did get an ANR in, it's, you'll, you'll be looking at it between now and the next meeting. It's pretty, pretty simple, you'll see. So, that's all I have. If there are no other member items, we can move on to administration. And I have two bills here, actually, speaking of Kirk Baker, maybe this is, actually, this is one bill from Kirk Baker. It's for the work that he did preparing the legal notice. He charges $49.50 an hour, and he's billed us for two hours a time at $99, and I can ask for a motion to approve the payment of this $99 bill. So moved? All in favor?
I didn't hear a second.
Oh, second, thank you. All, second?
I'll second.
Second? Seconded by Herm. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Approved. And then, the last item is, I think we're done with everything, but the second round of public comment. If the public really wants to comment, they can. Okay.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Greenwich. See, I'm puzzled by what Tom Mika said about Long Beach. I know that when the FEMA people did their last map, the deplorable one, based on the California wave studies, that the town appealed both Bear Skin Neck, a portion of Main Street, and Long Beach, that's something called a LOMA, Letter of Map Revision, and they were given it. So, at that point, they had got Long Beach out of the velocity zone. It's still in a flood zone. Has that changed?
I haven't looked into the LOMAs, and I'm just basing it on the base map that they have.
Well, the, the LOMA would, would supersede the, the actual map, and where the actual, you know, document or the revision, it would have to be, you know, would reside, I don't know. I believe the building inspector is the one locally who's charged with being responsible for all this, so I'm puzzled by that. And I'm also puzzled by, you know, the statement that we would get money for mitigation, because, you know, that's what you get from FEMA. You get supposedly 75% reimbursement for what they recognize as damage for an existing structure. Anything beyond that, they call mitigation, which is not the proper word for it. Enhancement or improvement would be the proper word, but that's their word, and they can grant that or not. So, they've just recently been applying for, you know, money for Long Beach. There was an article on the town meeting warrant, Article P, which the selectmen threw off, which included plans for patching the seawall, including FEMA funds and mitigation. So, I'm baffled.
I think that the funding that they were looking for is directed at a specific solution.
Yep.
Whereas a mitigation plan would take a broader view, and say, what are the other possible solutions? Anything from what we're thinking about improving a seawall versus retreat?
Yep. I, I would say further that, you know, when the DPW commissioners were discussing, you know, plans for Long Beach, Jim Gardner said that this somehow had, you know, thrust itself to the front of the line, like the obnoxious rich people leaving the hoi polloi in the gutter to go into a trendy club, and that other town projects that might be more important or deserving were thrust aside. You know, other town projects being, defending the coast, hither and yon. Dock Square would be one obvious instance. If that floods, the sewer system is inoperative. And another would be, you know, what was mentioned, Flat Ledge, and a berm that could be constructed under the Stone Bridge. So, I fail to see why, although Long Beach may be, you know, clamoring, why that's the most important project and should take precedence.
I'm kind of confused.
Let me give you the... Let me get a copy of the, the guidance document to you, and you can see what is involved in the process, what the scope can be. I believe it's quite different from saying, we've got a seawall project, and we want a grant. That's not what this is about.
This is broad, it sounds like it's broader than that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And independent of whether there's a LOMA, we have seen the other maps where these two areas of town are the ones that are threatened by sea level rise and storm surge.
I thought the plan for the seawall took into account some of what you're speaking about.
I think it's a single-minded solution, that the seawall is, is the answer.
No, no.
Well, it's also deteriorating, wasn't it? I mean, wasn't that the idea, that, so, anyway, let's continue this conversation.
Okay.
Okay. No more public comment? Hold on, hold on.
Please.
Yeah, okay. Seeing us.
Second, second, second public comment. I want to get some clarification on this new procedure that you have attached to your agenda, which is unauthorized or disruptive conduct. I want to read it, so I understand it.
Are you, excuse me, are you reading from the, you want to read it out loud?
Yes, I want the people that are in the audience that listen to this meeting to be able to hear what I'm saying, or what you are saying.
Okay, well, then, fine. Go ahead and read it.
Okay. As provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20G, "No person shall address a meeting of the planning board without permission of the chairman, and all persons shall, at the request of the chairman, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public party. If after clear warning from the chairman, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chairman may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." My question is, does that entire paragraph quote verbatim the sections of the Mass. General Law that you refer to, or is it just referencing the Mass. General Law, and then you people are putting in what you wish to have happened? In other words...
I understand what you're saying, I think. Is that a, is that a verbatim quote of the Mass. General Law? And the answer is yes.
Okay. Then in that case, then, the second question I'd like to ask is, suppose you people are debating or deliberating something, and I happen to be sitting next to Mr. Arsenean, and I find something terribly offensive about what you've said, and I whispered to him in a comment on that, would you consider that being disruptive of the meeting?
Well, you're, you're really asking a hypothetical question.
Well, I'm asking a question because it's actually happened at other meetings.
Well, okay, but I don't know what happened at the other meetings, but I would say that it's a hypothetical, and there are many factors that could influence...
Okay.
...the answer to that, so I can't answer.
All right. Okay. I'll just give this for reference, then. I believe it was the August 13th selectmen's meeting that they had a reorganization meeting, a section to reorganize the, the select board. And the nominations came forth, with Mr. Campbell nominating himself, another person nominating Mr. Murphy. And there was some debate amongst the selectmen as to the various reasons why they thought some people were more suitable to be the next chairman than the other, and...
By the way, you've got 30 seconds.
Okay. 30 seconds. So, anyway, you can watch the meeting. It came to the point where one person, the chairman, the then-chairperson of the selectmen said she thought the Board was more diverse now than ever, and that caused me to make a little comment to Mr. Arsenean, that it must have been something when they weren't diverse. And at that, I got admonished that, if you're going to be talking, please leave the meeting. So, I think you can watch the meeting and see if any other people were disrupted by that meeting. You can certainly watch it. You can certainly watch it. I just want to know what your procedures are going to be on what's disruptive, whether if I can whisper to him and be told to leave the meeting per this general law, or whether or not you'll take a little bit more tolerant view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
It is now...